I would like to call to order the school board meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13 for Tuesday, August 4th. If you would please, if you're able, arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will get started with the roll call. Molly.
Thank you. A Samurai. Is she on there?
She is. I saw her lips move. Can you try again, Hala? I'm not hearing her, Brian.
Are we okay with you being a thumbs up to acknowledge?
Her mic's live from our standpoint. She might have to disconnect and reconnect.
Hala, can you hear Brian? We might.
Yep, she did. She's disconnecting, reconnecting.
In the meantime, before we do roll call, then I will read this statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools, general process for remote school board meetings. Due to the current federal state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay at Home and Guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meeting by telephone or other electronic means. Members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they're not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call still. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded according to... Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. All right, how are we doing, Hala? Do we see her back?
Hala, we can see your lips moving, but we can't hear you.
So where is Dawn? Are you around? Dawn, what is our... What should our procedure be at this moment? Can she... If she is not able to verbally join, can she participate? How does this work?
We can have her call in.
I was just gonna say.
Have her call in on her phone? Okay. All right.
Is Dawn able to get that information to her?
She just gave a thumbs up. She can hear us. So, sorry about the technical difficulties to everybody who has come to join us.
Yeah, she can still do video too if she wanted to.
Okay, she can keep her video on.
Yeah, she can stay on the video. But she just has to do audio from her phone.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we will wait then for the technical team.
Yeah.
As a note, if you're here and you would like to speak, we ask that you fill out one of the blue cards that's on the table out there. You'll need your name and address, and you'll have to declare that when you come sit at the table, so.
Okay, she's popping in here. All right, Hala, I think we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I'm doing it on my phone.
All right. Great. Thank you, Hala. Sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry about all that.
All right. Now, Molly, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. A Samurai.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Lewis, here. Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
All right, thank you. Our mission statement... I'm sorry. Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
Oh, move.
John, second?
Second.
I'll second.
Molly. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right. We will move on to the announcements. Pardon me while I learn the new system here. August 18th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, we'll have a school board work session here in the community room. August 25th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. September 8th, Tuesday, is the first day of school for students. On September 8th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we will also have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
Chair Severson, members, none at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the communication of the board. At this time, any citizens or employees may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to the board? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the personnel report, meeting minutes, and the treasurer's reports for May and June. Can we have a motion to move that forward?
Oh, moved.
Lauren, second?
Second.
John, all right. Any discussion on that? All right. Let's vote.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, we'll move on to the discussion items, report and information items. We'll start with reports from members of the board. Lauren, I don't think I ever call on you first. I think it's your time. Or did I call on you first last time?
I'm prepared, but you did call on me first last time, and I said I hated going first.
Better...
But I...
Oh, yeah, I do remember this now.
Yep, because I missed half the things that I always tend to talk about.
Yeah, that's right. Well, hopefully you're more prepared this time, and you've learned your lesson.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair Severson.
We're gonna build them up, Maddy.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm blushing under my mask. Thanks. Since our last meeting, I did attend the chair meeting this evening, as well as our Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting. I've also had several conversations and emails from community members. And I want to mention too, I really appreciate those community members and the staff who've reached out and emailed the board ahead of our meeting today. I really value the input and the dedication, the time it took to send those, and I read them and I appreciated them. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Molly.
Yeah, thank you. I also attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement prior to this. I had a virtual meeting with Superintendent Stenvik last week and had several conversations with parents, community members. And I was gonna say basically the same thing that Lauren said. I know we don't all individually respond to those emails, but know that they were all read and taken into consideration as we move into this evening's meeting. Thank you.
All right. John.
Yeah. The multiple conversations with community members, staff, obviously same as everyone else. And again, just to echo what is, your emails get read and certainly taken to heart. I think I had a conversation with the superintendent. I think that's about it.
All right, great. Hala.
I attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement right before this, and I've been communicating with community members, parents, and some students. And I also wanted to state that I did receive the emails about the decision that we're making about how to proceed this year. And I want to say I really, really appreciate the time and energy that people took into writing them. And I want to... I want everyone to know that we're listening. And me personally, I'm in the same boat in another district. So all the words I read really resonate. I just... I just want everyone to know that we're listening.
All right, thanks, Hala. And Laura.
Well, I, again, I'm gonna echo what all the other board members have also said, is I really appreciate all the communications that... That were sent out. They were very, very well-written. And I really appreciate having... Having... Being... I really appreciate everybody taking the time to really let us know how they feel and how they would like us to proceed. So getting that input is so incredibly valuable, especially during a time when you don't have as much opportunity to have contact. So I really do appreciate that. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
All right, thanks. As for me, attended the chair meeting with Superintendent Stenvik and Member Mueller. Like everyone else, have had several conversations with community members. Superintendent Stenvik and I met to discuss various things. And again, it's been said, but I would like to reiterate, thanks for the emails. It's hard right now because we can't have face-to-face meetings, and we're not seeing each other in open space. And so the emails help us get a feel for what people, at least a certain amount of people are thinking or feeling. I sought out to actually reply to each individually, but in order to keep up with the volume, I had to move away from that. So if I didn't get to yours individually, sorry, I did read it. It's a lot of emails. I've never been able to do to say, due to the volume of emails, I might not be able to reply individually. But it was encouraging to hear what people had to say. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report?
Yes. Each week we have... On Thursdays, we have a weekly phone call with the Commissioner of Education and her team. So those are very informative as we... As we move forward in charting these new waters, right? So we were able to have a webinar and phone call with the Commissioner last week prior... Just prior to the governor announcing. So we got minutes to... One minutes in advance notice, right? Also attended the Association of Metropolitan School District Special Meeting on back-to-school plans with many metro-area superintendents. As... Just as the school board members have mentioned, many, many meetings and communication with stakeholders regarding the reopening of schools this fall and the back-to-school plans. And I'll echo what you all said. Much appreciated that input. Also, a communication with various school board members, and I want to thank you all for your time.
All right, thanks. We will move on to the Minnesota State High School League membership. I believe that's Assistant Principal Matt Miller. And will Jake be joining you, Matt?
Yes. He will.
All right. Jake, I'm sorry. Oh, hi, Jake. Sorry.
Jake, good to see you. Madam Chair, Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, thank you for having us tonight. Jake and I will be going over the Minnesota State High School League resolution with you, and that's in your... That's in your board book in detail. I'm gonna summarize that for you. And then Jake had the luxury of sitting in on a four-hour State High School League meeting this morning. Maybe five hours, sorry, Jake. And we're gonna give you some details on what that looks like for return to play this fall, and then what potential... Or what sports they're gonna move. So I'll walk through that. Now, Dawn, do you make me a host that I could share my PowerPoint?
You can share without being a host.
Oh, perfect. All right, thank you. Okay. Give me a second here. Sorry. All right, how does that look for everybody? Does that look good?
Looks good.
Yep.
Yep.
Perfect. Excellent. Okay. So I am gonna start off with our mission here at Columbia Heights Public Schools, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. We talked about our core values. This presentation's gonna focus on excellence, collaboration with the State High School League, and then courage during this pandemic and next steps as we move forward. So in your board book, this is governance here. This happens every year with our district and every other district that participates in the Minnesota State High School League. We... We're asking for a resolution from our school board just to renew our membership with the Minnesota State High School League. And then what that is, is you're approving that we participate in inner-school activities sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League and its subdivisions. So later on this month, it will be... I'll come back and we'll... And it will be an action item. And then I'm gonna have Jake talk about details on that meeting this morning from the State High School League, and then at the end, we'll... We'll filter in questions.
Sure. Thank you, Principal or Assistant Principal Miller. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I did attend the Minnesota State High School League Board Meeting this morning and running into the afternoon. It was long. Obviously, they had a lot to cover and a lot of tough decisions to be made. So they have approved the start date for boys' and girls' soccer, girls' swim, girls' tennis, and cross-country. We don't have cross-country, but those four or five sports will begin practices on August 17th. They made the decision, tough decision. There was several voting rounds for both football and for volleyball to create a fourth season. That's going to fall somewhere in between the winter and the spring. They threw out some example dates. These are not set in stone at all, but something like March 15th to possibly May 15th. And then if they were able to have any postseason or culminating event, maybe a couple of weeks beyond that. And then the spring season would move on after May 15th to something possibly like July 15th. But they're hoping to fit volleyball and football into those timeframes. Adapted soccer, which we have, has not... There has not been a decision made. Typically, the start date is later on that anyways. They are polling families within the coaches, or the coaches are polling their families, and they're seeking some feedback for that. But that decision will be made here in the near future. We have always been committed to providing safe opportunities for our students to participate in activities. And the high school board specifically mentioned these promoting physical, mental, and social well-being of our students. We all recognize how important activities and athletics are to our students, our communities, to our families. And so we are obviously, along with the high school board, following all MDH guidelines for any of those approved sports or activities. Assistant Principal Miller, do you have anything to add on that?
No, that was good. So we... We are open for questions. We will do our best on answering any of your questions that we have right now, or if we don't have an answer, we will seek out and we'll find that answer for you.
All right. Any questions? Yep. Any questions? Lauren.
Yep. Hi, Mr. Miller. One question here is, will the football and volleyball teams have any practices in fall? Or will they wait until this spring season?
Yeah, that was a good question. And they actually... Correct me if I'm wrong, Jake. I don't know if he bumped off. But they did... Yeah, they did. I believe they did vote on that, and they did clear practices to happen. What that's gonna look like, though, and the guidelines within that, we're gonna have to work those out. But they did clear practices to happen this fall.
It will be... Yeah, it'll be similar, and they're pushing it back to their eligibility committee to come up with recommendations for those two sports. They did approve practices, but those recommendations will be coming out, and then there'll be a timeframe similar to the summer coaching waiver that we've done in the past for other sports. And so we just don't know what those are going to be yet. They're still determining those. Additionally, transportation is something that I needed to hit on. There was... There's definitely talk about that among the Minnesota State High School League, as well as the... I don't know if it's MDH or MDE guidelines. I've read too many guidelines now. But in terms of transportation and busing, if we are in distance learning, I believe we are... Or sorry, maybe I should grab my notes here. We are in distance learning. We are at 50... Or yeah, if we're in a hybrid situation, or if we're mandated to be in a possible hybrid situation, we'd be at a 50% bus capacity. If we're fully in-person, or if we can be in-person, we could go up to 100% bus capacity. There's been a lot of talk within the Tri-Metro Conference about how do we do busing as well as the high school league. And some of the comments around that are to try to keep it as local as possible, reducing that bus... Busing time, and then having less competitions as well, just to minimize some of those risks. But that's obviously a plan that we will have to further explore and make some decisions on here in the near future. Now, grab my cat now.
Yeah, he's definitely stealing the show there. Any other questions from board members? Trying to look at my screen and U-Haul. All right. Well, thank you, guys, for joining us tonight with that presentation. And the resolution board members is on page 25 in your packet. So if you want to read it, there it is for you. All right. I'd like to welcome...
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Like to welcome Director Hennickens, right here with us in the main room, to talk to us about facility rental fees.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Give me a second here to make sure I get the right presentation up. All right. So this evening, we're gonna talk about... Present about facility use fees. As always, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values, when we're talking about the community using our facilities, obviously, community and collaboration. We do a lot of work with the community to get the facilities that we have. So I think those are two very big components of this conversation. This evening, this is just an informational presentation, and there will be no action item, but this will come forward at the next board... Regular school board meeting as an action item. So I want to kind of start with breaking down what I'm gonna go through. So I'm gonna talk about our current facility fee structure, our review process for looking at this, and who we... Who we looked at, looking at their fee structures, and then our recommendation for moving forward with a new fee structure. And so current structure, and I just... I want to really emphasize that this was adopted in 1998. There was a revision in 2006, and that revision only partially revised, or really minimally revised, fees. It was just language revision, basically, for categories one and category two. So I'm not gonna go through each and every bullet point, but the basic structure was we had a free category, category one, and these are all the pieces within that. And then we had a fee-based category, category two. And I think another note is that we made... We charge fees by day. We didn't... We don't charge an hourly rate for our spaces. We charge a daily rate for our spaces. So again, this is our current structure. And again, this structure was adopted in 98. Obviously, not increasing fees for 20-plus years is kind of unheard of. And so we really wanted to look at our other... Fridley and other places around us, and just to see how we can redesign our fee structure for using our facilities that's more comparable to our neighbors. So again, district comparisons, I mentioned Fridley already, St. Anthony, Roseville, and Mounds U. So within that, we looked at, you know, what are their fees? How do they... They charge those fees? Everybody charges an hourly fee. We're the only one that does a daily fee. And most of them had four categories or classes of fees. The first category being free, and then the other categories, you know, had a nominal fee to them, and it just grew as you went through the categories. So that's... That was our... Kind of our starting point of really looking at and reevaluating our fees. So looking... Moving forward, our recommendation is, like our other... Our neighbors, to be in a four-category structure and to price our fee... Our facility uses in a similar fashion to what our neighbors do. You know, there's a lot of things that we didn't charge for. I'll give you an example. In the Performing Arts Center in the past, you rented the room, and all the equipment and everything just came along with it, and you just got to use it as renting the room. So obviously, there's a lot of very expensive equipment in that room. We've learned that through our bond referendum project and remodeling that space. So that really pointed out, you know, the need to really revamp these, to make sure that we're charging appropriately for the fees, but still make them, you know, at a way that are affordable for people. So... And again, I'm not gonna read all through these, and in the next board packet, it'll be fully attached, and I'll show it at the end, kind of what our breakdown of fee structure is. But again, we have that free, that category one, and, you know, there's a lot of the normal that you would assume we're not gonna charge for within our... On our fees. And really, all of these people are part of the free in our current version. So then there's the category two. So really, what we're doing is we're really breaking out the fee... The fee portion of it. So the category two, we're moving to an hourly rate. And so there is a charge to rent the facilities, and then we do have, you know, fees to go around with those room rentals. And you can see, you know, the groups that we're talking about there. Category three, again, hourly rates. It's just the rates are gonna increase. And these are the, you know, when we're doing category two, where there's 70% or less of the district... Or the people at the event or district people. So it's more of an outside group coming into the community. We're gonna charge them more money. And then the category four, you know, are the business-for-profit organizations and other groups that don't fit into the other categories, that, you know, have the highest fee structure. So that's... That's how we're... Recommendation is to move forward. And this is something that is, as far as a fee rate, we need to increase. We do not... We do not collect a lot of money for this. So this isn't something that is a moneymaker for us by any means, but we do need to make sure, I think, that as people are using our facilities more and more and more, that we can afford to pay the people to maintain the spaces and maintain the equipment. So that's... Before we get to questions, I just wanted to quickly show the fee structure, so, you know, you can kind of get an idea. This will be an increase in costs for some organizations that use our facility, and that's gonna range. I can't give you an exact number of percent increase, because it depends on how many hours you use it. So if you use it half the day, you know, your fee rate will increase, you know, anywhere from probably 15 to 20%. But again, you have to remember that we haven't raised rates since 1998. And then... But if you only use a room for, say, an hour or two, your fee may actually be very, very similar to what it was before. So it just increases as the amount of time you use it. So with that, I'll take any questions on that. Again, this will come at the next board meeting, and this whole document here will be attached with the next... With the action item.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question.
Lauren.
And maybe I saw that up there, but I'm not seeing it now. But I thought I saw that there was a charge for groups who didn't fall into category one or two. Specifically, I'm thinking like PTO organizations that are doing fundraisers. I felt like that fit in a charge category. Is that...
Yes.
Is that accurate?
So it depends on what the fundraiser is specifically for. So obviously, with the PTO, and, and if the fundraiser is, is, I mean, you would assume, obviously, is for raising for something specifically for a school, whether it's a field trip, or that would be a no charge.
Okay.
So they're, they're really, pretty much fit into the category of no charge. But that's a good point. Thank you for pointing that out. Because yes, if some groups are doing fundraising, if that fundraising that they're doing, even though they would be a free group, isn't going to the benefit of our students specifically, or our, one of our schools specifically, then suddenly it, it moves into another category.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
All right, great. Other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Laura.
Laura. I, I have a question right now with, with cleaning and sanitizing. Are, are we considering any type of an additional charge for sanitizing the space if it's used by an outside group?
We do have a fee associated with additional cleaning that's necessary, and that would fall into that category. At this point, it's, it's, it's kind of similar fashion as our day-to-day. We're not addressing it as, as a separate item in this. That's not what brought this about. And so I guess the answer is kind of yes and no. The, the fees do allow for any additional cleaning necessary. So, you know, that's more intended for, we use the space, we didn't clean anything up, and we were supposed to, and so we're going to charge them a fee for that cleaning. It does open it up, but that's not the intention of this. The intention is just to really overhaul our, our fees as a whole in the district. And, you know, yes, there may be some additional costs for disinfecting, depending on the volume. But we also haven't decided to, our process for actually renting out facilities, given COVID, given our status of, of, of school happening. So I think that that more conversation will happen on that in the future. This, right now, is just setting the foundation fee structure for our fee rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, that's enough of an answer.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the action item. And we'll start right at the top with districts back to school plan. And I think we're going to kick it off with Superintendent Stenvik.
Yes, thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, if I may. I would like to start by thanking all of the stakeholders who gave input into the planning process. As member Samari stated earlier, we are listening. And this evening, we are presenting a balanced, data-driven approach that supports health and safety, also balancing out the need to educate our children, the mission of our, of our schools, and also understanding the challenges that families face right now. So as, as, as we move forward, I'll hand it off to Director Stonk.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Severson, and members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here this evening with other directors, Director Hennickens, Director Namemwey, Dr. Frye, and Director Tukral for our back-to-school plan presentation. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening's presentation will really involve all of our district's core values. Community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This evening's presentation will include a governance question. We are seeking approval of the 2020, 2020, 2021 back-to-school plan. This evening's presentation, we drew on the guidelines of Governor Walz, the Minnesota Department of Education, and the Minnesota Department of Health. Governor Walz's Executive Order 2082, the Safe Learning Plan for 2020, 2021, and the 2020, 2021 Planning Guidance for Minnesota Public Schools. At this, I'll hand the floor over to Director Namemwey.
Thank you, Director Stonk, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. We spent an exorbitant amount of time to look at the data, preparing for our back-to-school plan. As you can see before us, we conducted a family survey in July. There was a total of about 1,068 families that responded. And this survey included a Spanish version as well, so that we can reach all the families within our district. In addition to that, we also conducted a survey with our staff in July as well. We did some focus group, and we had some staff meeting, asking the questions and inputs, so that we can present an equitable plan. In addition to that, we also looked at Anoka County and the adjacent counties in terms of what is our proportion of COVID cases in Anoka County compared to the other counties. We've also gone a little bit nuclear and focused on Columbia Heights and Hilltop to be able to identify the number of cases. And while Columbia Heights is in the Anoka County, we are very different than the rest of the communities within the Anoka County. Especially in Hilltop, we have high cases of COVID compared to the rest of the counties. And that was good information for us to have and to pay attention to, as we know that families are concerned about the pandemic. In addition to that, we are continuing to work with county officials, county health officials in the Anoka County to guide our decisions. You know, internally, we've also conducted some facilities checks to make sure that we're respecting the social distancing guidelines that have come from the Minnesota Department of Education or, or DHS. And in addition to that, we want to make sure that whatever we're planning, we're going to fulfill those staffing capacity. While we know that we want to come back to school, there are some concern with some staff because of medical reasons. And so you can see that the data we've reviewed was a lot. And here's an example of our family survey that we conducted in July. You can see we based it on the three models that were recommended by the Department of Education. And in scenario one was the full in-person learning. You can see that of the 1,068 families who participated, the numbers are not quite evenly divided. You had more people prefer the, the full in-person compared to the other two category. When you go to scenario two, the hybrid learning, that seemed to have been the most favorite of all the families who participated in the survey, because there were 549 yeses, and you can see the rest are pretty low. So in scenario three, which will be distance learning, it's almost a tie between those who say yes and those who say no. And so you can see that this is one set of data that we looked at to be able to make decisions. Another example, you know, as you know, we serve a diverse community, and transportation creates that access to opportunities. But interestingly enough, on the survey, we noticed that when we asked the question, if you send your student to school, will your student take the school bus? And what you notice is that 37% of the families who responded say yes, but half of those families who responded also say no. And we can only attribute this to concerns that families have. And it's important for me to say that this was our preliminary survey. We are currently conducting another more specific survey that is asking each individual family to respond. We launched that survey virtually on Monday, no, excuse me, on Friday. And then we're doing some follow-up with phone calls. And then we will also do it by US mail for those families who do not respond, so that we can make sure that every single family in our district has responded to that survey. And we also paid attention to the individual comment, because our survey was asking yes and no question. But we also wanted to capture people's expressions. And in here, in the comments that we've received, we received a total of over 500 comments, looking at the Spanish survey and the English survey. And at the end, we categorized all those comments in these five areas. You have learning and academics, where we saw family wanting their children to participate in learning, some in-person, some hybrid because of the concerns that they have. And you had some families who says, you know, distance learning was too much screen for our children. The fear factor is one that also got a lot of comments. We know that there are people who have lost loved one during this pandemic, and that was also expressed in the survey where parents were asking us to pay attention in our planning to ensure that we, you know, we follow up the PPEs if we were to open school or whatever we're doing in school. And you can see that distance learning came back again as an expectation for many families. And then the last category, which I think we all care about, is that childcare and parent support. We heard a lot of voices from parents who express support and concern at the same time. For example, you know, one of the comments is, parents will need to transport their children, again, showing care at the same time, asking for support. So at this point, I will pass the floor to Director Tukral.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. We would like to present the four-phase plan for returning to school in Columbia Heights. We will go through each phase and provide more details of what it means for students, staff, and families. The four phases, as listed on the slide, begins with heights from home. This is all distance learning for students and staff. The next phase is modified hybrid, followed by full hybrid, and then all-on-site learning. Throughout the slides, I'll reiterate again, but families will have the option to choose all distance learning or heights from home at any time for their students. So we'll begin with the first phase, which is an upgraded version of our spring distance learning, which we're calling heights from home. All learning that occurs at home will use an online platform, and it will be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. Synchronous learning is when instruction happens at a designated time, and students learn using Zoom or other online meeting platforms. This is what occurred during summer encore. We had students join from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., and their learning occurred direct instruction with the teachers. This is also what the high school used in the spring, when they used their online live lessons. The other opportunity we have is asynchronous learning. This is where students have more flexible schedule and timing, and it is a combination of videos as well as other assignments. All students in heights from home will have access to technology as well as support for internet using hotspots and other options. We will provide virtual academic and mental health support for students in individual and small group settings using virtual online setting. Materials will be provided to support hands-on student learning. We tried this out in summer encore this year, and it really was successful. Students had whatever materials they needed for the instructions that the teachers were providing. They had it in hand, so that would be something we would include in heights from home. The next phase is modified hybrid. Students all start in heights from home. And the majority of students will stay in heights from home or distance learning. Throughout this phase, we have the opportunity for select students to receive onsite support. We really would start this small, and we would use MDE guidance on prioritizing which students receive onsite support. MDE guidance includes providing support for students receiving special ed services, our multilingual learners who are newer to the country, our youngest learners, and students needing support for graduation. Administration would work with families and staff to determine which students would come on site and when and how this would occur. Similar to the last phase of learning, students in heights from home, which would be the majority of students for most of the days, would be doing synchronous and asynchronous learning. And once again, they will all have access to technology, internet, and hands-on materials. The next phase is full hybrid. This is where all students will have a combination of onsite learning and heights from home. Administration would work on a rotation schedule, trying to prioritize families on the same day. We would use MDE and MDH guidelines, so there is a set capacity for the number of students that can fit into our classrooms and different spaces in the building. Learning will continue to be synchronous and asynchronous, as well as access to technology, internet, and materials. Just as mentioned before, families will continue to have the option to choose heights from home, distance learning for their students. And the last phase is onsite learning. Students and staff will be learning onsite unless a family chooses heights from home for their students. Safety precautions following MDH guidelines for in-person learning will be followed. And as we move into this fall, we're launching a stronger version of our distance learning. We're calling it heights from home. Anytime a student is learning from home, we will call it heights from home. And to create this stronger learning experience, we, as a staff, reflected. We used input from surveys that were given in the spring, as well as summer encore, that was given to students, families, and staff. We also have been doing staff focus groups to really reflect on what worked, some areas to change, and then begin planning what we can do to prepare for the fall. This includes curriculum time for our staff to prepare for fall, including the materials that they would like to provide students, and technology support. Here's a list of improvements in which we will make to heights from home, which is a little different than what we had in the spring for distance learning. We are going to ensure we have access to technology and internet for every student. We are going to continue to focus in on that rigorous coursework, but really focusing in on the state and national standards. We are going to provide daily interaction with staff and other students. This was an area we saw in a lot of surveys that we sent out, that the families and students, as well as the staff, really wanted to see each other every day. So we will provide opportunities for every student to have that daily. We will provide virtual academic and mental health support. This could be individual or small group support with staff members. And then we also are providing family support with technology and student learning. And this could include online videos to support families, classes, conferences, parent academies, and virtual sessions. And the last bullet point is probably one of the most important. We're going to continue to focus in on relationships. We're going to start our year, similar to the way we start every fall, by welcoming each and every kid into our classroom, into our virtual classroom, build those relationships in the community, so our students feel welcome into heights right away. Heights from home will be an option for families to choose at any time. They will, families will commit to a full quarter of heights from home if they choose that option. We will be sending out a survey to start the year to find out if families are interested in choosing heights from home, but they may choose that at any time. Whichever phase we are in, they may choose that option, and we will have a link available for them to do that. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Director Frye to share about special education and health support.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Got the opportunity to talk about the physical health, as well as the mental health of our students and staff, and how we're going to support them this school year. Regarding the physical health of our students and staff, we are going to continue to collaborate with intermediate district 916, their health supervisor, to ensure that the Department of Health guidelines and updates are consistently implemented, implemented. We have identified triage spaces for students who have COVID symptoms at school, so they can be separated, and we can get them home in a timely manner to ensure there's not, not cross-contamination throughout the building. Another physical piece that we're going to look at is the COVID response plan. This is where we connect with regional support teams, with the Department of Education, Department of Health, regional service cooperatives, and local public health to support the district regarding implementation and ongoing evaluation of our learning models to see if we need to respond in a different way in regards to our learning models and what that might look like. Regarding the mental health of our students and staff, our student support team is in a, is in planning process of updating and enhancing resources for families and students, our families and staff, to ensure that we are enhancing our level of support for both. We are also going to provide trauma-informed. We are also going to provide trauma-informed practices and restorative practice training provided to ensure that we are supporting our students, their mental health as well as a trauma that they may have experienced this summer to help support them through this. And finally, for our mental health, we're going to continue to have students have an opportunity to work with Lee Carlson if they so choose. That's some teletherapy that will continue to be offered to uh to help support their mental health as well. The next slide I'm going to talk about is special education, and the big thing here is that we're going to provide continuity and consistency in service provided. The learning priorities for our students who qualify for special educations do not change because of the learning environment. They are consistent. So we, as the adults, need to change how we are reaching those students in providing consistency and continuity. We will continue to provide contingency plans will be developed with parents' input for heights from home and hybrid learning process. And part of that is an important thing is that parents are informed of the proposed services. They have input in what that might look like, and they also need to be informed of the platform for delivery of those services for online and the hybrid models. And finally, we will continue to work with, in communication with Intermediate District nine sixteen on service delivery models and supports as we always do. With that, I'm going to be turning it over to Executive Director Niemboi.
Thank you, Director Frye, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. We all know that Columbia Heights is home to many multilingual learners. And as we were preparing for our back-to-school plan, we also spent some time looking at what is it that we need to do to prepare both the adults for the engagement of the instruction of language development in our district. So we will be providing professional development for teachers. These are content teachers on how to better support our multilingual learners. In addition to that, we've also engaged in collaboration and planning with EL teachers this summer. They're looking at their curriculum, reviewing it, and writing new curriculum to better support our multilingual learners. And all these plannings are done by also looking at the data, so that all our decisions are data-driven. We're looking at access scores so that we can do a better job of placing our students according to their levels of language proficiency and continue to provide the support that they need. So finally, we've also provided varied support for students based on need. And we did that during distance learning, and we're looking forward to do it again as we plan for our back-to-school plan. And with that said, I'm going to end it over to Director Anakin.
Uh, thank you. Um, so the next slide is facilities, health, and safety. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. So there's, obviously, it's a big component in the conversation as far as how this is going to happen and logistically what can happen. I just kind of wanted to step through some of these main areas that we're really working on actively. One of the big conversations that's out there is district ventilation, indoor air quality. So there are indoor air quality standards that we have to meet, and we continue to do so. And then how does this conversation, how does that fit into the conversation of any potential changes to be made based on current knowledge and current guidelines or recommendations? So I just wanted to put that out there, that we are actively engaged in those conversations and continue to stay on top of what's going to be the best practice for students and staff being in the building. Signage and training. Last time I talked about discussion about signage that we're talking about getting, we've received a majority of our signage, and we've started implementing that signage in anticipation for any kind of level of return. And the main reason we did that is just we had to be prepared, and we just couldn't be prepared by waiting any longer. Along with that will be obviously some staff training. We talked about last time as well in a previous conversation about building classroom capacity. That's been mentioned in this presentation earlier. The importance of that in those conversations about hybrids, the modified or the full and hybrid, that definitely plays into it. There's guidelines on that. So we do know what our room capacities are. We've gone through our rooms, and we do know those capacities. Cleaning and disinfecting is a massive one, and, you know, just reflecting just on the fact of what it took to clean this room and get it ready for the board meeting tonight, and that time and effort of disinfecting each and every chair, you know, not knowing exactly how many chairs we were going to use, so you know, you just do them all. So if we need to pull them out, we can, and it takes time, and it also takes a lot of supply. So we're working on building up that supply, and we do have a stock, depending on what cleaning and disinfecting supply it is. Some of them are more readily available than others. And then building access, you know, redefining how we do building access. We've been working hard on trying to funnel our access and making sure that we're taking appropriately steps as staff come into site and looking at the restrictions of any visitors that would be coming onto site. And then face coverings. Obviously, we have an executive order that's defining that for us, and we will have signage appropriately for that as well. And again, I can't say it enough that, like everybody else, we're continuing to read the guidance as it changes, and it can change week to week. So we continue to look at MDH and MDE particularly for that guidance. Another big two pieces that were mentioned before in earlier presentations, one, transportation, and then another is our nutritional services. And, you know, I can't say enough about, you know, how our food service responded when this whole started. And, you know, approximately a hundred, just over a hundred twenty-seven thousand meals have been served remotely, basically, delivering meals out to sites and getting them to families, to kids. And so I think that's amazing undertaking to switch. Now, on the other hand, the game is changing a little bit, and we have the school year starting. USDA guides what happens and how we serve lunch and how we get reimbursed for it, basically. And so we were currently living under a summer feeding program, which makes things a little bit easier in this pandemic. And they allowed for that summer feeding program to be instituted at the end of the school year. Well, that does not exist currently. So we're under the same guidelines as a normal school year. So this can be such a major impact financially for the food service program, depending on what the USDA decides to do. So we're still waiting. We're still, you know, like a lot of things, waiting for guidance to change. You know, Minnesota State High School League, waiting for their guidance. I mean, there's a lot of guidance that we're still waiting for. Transportation that was mentioned earlier, and there is guidance out there specifically on the fifty percent. So when we're, if we're in a modified hybrid or hybrid scenario, we can run at fifty percent capacity on those buses, and that's the guideline that we have to abide by. Obviously, there's additional cleaning and disinfecting protocols that we need to do for those buses. And so, and we've been working with the bus company on developing those. Obviously, there's questions in all of these conversations about, you know, making sure that we can still appropriately staff the food service department, making sure we can appropriately staff with bus drivers. So these are all things that we're really active in, and just we want to mention them and go through them just because we want to make sure that everybody knows that we're working hard to ensure that we can do the things that we need to do through any of these phases. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Stunkel.
Hello. So, uh, community education is also very involved with all of our programs, and we're anticipating being able to offer many of these programs based on families' interest and also staffing capabilities. Childcare, under the governor's executive order, if we are at the hybrid level or if we are at a distance learning model, then we are required to provide childcare for critical care workers. We're also hoping to reinstitute our adventure club childcare program after school and our mini adventures childcare program for three- to five-year-olds. Our ECFE program and pre-K three have also been, we've been planning for those with the different phases. Out-of-school programs, our plan is to continue to provide encore programming. Of course, that will all be aligned with the guidelines, and also working with activities and athletics, as you heard earlier this evening. We plan to provide some adult enrichment, and that also has been planned based on the various phases and adult basic education. I was meeting with them, and they were saying that actually a distance learning model has really been effective in reaching out families with adults that are working on their, whether it's their English learning or getting different certifications. So our ABE program at forty-one eleven Central is a distance learning model right now. And then Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and Outdoor Classroom. That's been going this summer. You should see how tall the corn is growing out there in Blooming Heights. Really wonderful with our four high school assistants. And that programming, just as it was in the spring with distance learning, it also has the ability to be engaging with our students at any of the phases that we would be. Communications is, of course, critical. We already, as we mentioned, showed you the results from the July surveys that we did with families and staff. We also sent out a staff survey already, and this week we'll be sending out a family survey. So that is to come this week. Families can look for that. That will be coming out. And then also making sure that we're communicating updates to families through our all-call system, through emails, or utilizing our social media and our website as well. We also send out mailings as a district, and then we've started to create some videos as well. Communication is such an important relationship-building and also just the making sure that we are hearing from the community and that the community is hearing from us. The transition between phases. So you heard about the different phases, and there can be movement between the phases. Transitions to a more restrictive phase can happen at any time during the year due to an increase in COVID cases. So one could go to a more restrictive stage during the year if the COVID cases increase. We will be reevaluating our plan for each quarter based on the data and the other factors that were mentioned earlier. And then between transitions, when we move from one phase to another, there will be planning time. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, districts can use up to five instructional days for staff during the course of the year to plan for the change in instructional delivery during the 2020, 2021 school year. With that, I'm going to hand the floor to Superintendent Stenvik.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. So based on all of the current data and all of the components that the directors have shared, the administration recommends that the school board approve the four-phase plan. Given that survey results show many concerns from families and staff, case rates in Columbia Heights Public School District boundaries are very high, liability considerations for COVID-nineteen, staffing, transportation, and facility consideration. If approved, the four-phase plan. At this time, we are considering a start to the school year in Phase Two, which is modified hybrid. So as you can see, modified hybrid means that students will start by learning through heights from home, and small groups of identified students would be learning onsite some of the days of the week based on student need and staffing considerations. Communications, of course, would go out to all staff and families, and staff is currently working now to determine which of the small groups could be brought back on campus and how that schedule would work. So selecting the small groups, as mentioned previously by Director Tuckrell, is based on MDE, Minnesota Department of Education guidance. The examples would include students with special needs, newcomer EL students, youngest students, and students needing help with graduation. Of course, we haven't been in this hybrid scenario before ever. So the thinking is the district doesn't have to be limited to one hybrid scenario. In fact, we can have two different hybrid scenarios. So that's starting small to learn how to do it really well before moving on into a fuller hybrid scenario and having more kids onsite at once. And so with that, the governance question before the board is approval of the 2020, 2021 four-phase back-to-school plan.
Questions? Kristin, would you mind pulling down? Thank you. Oh, who said that?
Holla.
Holla. Holla, go ahead, Holla.
Yeah. Um, so I understand how the modified hybrid would be keeping kids safe, and even kids who we would be allowing to come back in, their families could choose to keep them at home. But I'd like to know what we're going to do to keep staff safe. If they don't feel comfortable coming back, if they feel like it's a threat to their health or to their families, what can we do about that? What's the plan right now?
I'll take that one. Thank you, Director Samurai. Staff is being surveyed right now, and staff has, just per the guidelines, has the ability to self-identify. We need to follow that criteria. And so part of that consideration is staff capacity. If we are unable to run an onsite program based on staff, then, you know, then we'll make different accommodations through heights from home and whatnot. So that's exactly the work that we're working on right now, is collecting all of that specific information. The July surveys were more general, as Director Niemboi mentioned. Lots of yes-no questions and then ability to comment. Now we're asking for that specific self-identify, so that goes for families and staff where we're at.
So if a staff member self-identifies that they're at risk and that they choose to work remotely, can we say that they will have that option, or it's going to be considered?
It's exactly following the guidelines from the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health. And so the Director of Human Resources is working on, you know, it's very private data. It's not, you know, that's not public data, of course. And so the Director of Human Resources is fielding phone calls and emails from each and every staff member that's contacting her, and it's individual, case-by-case basis, what the staff member is reporting. So at this point, the idea would be each school is evaluating their capacity to run small groups. So let's say it was a particular special education classroom. Is there a qualified special ed teacher who can work with that small group? Luckily, we have more than one at each school, and so that's exactly what we're evaluating. Is there, if there are zero special education teachers at a school who medically is able to come back, then that's going to be something that we need to discuss. And the school's evaluating their capacity of which of the groups they're able to, in those high-needs groups based on the guidelines, which can they come back to start with?
My main concern right now is safety, just like we're giving students and families the choice to go fully at home, to do heights at home or from home. My concern is safety of staff. The safety of staff is not less important than the safety of the students and their families.
Correct.
And I understand that education as a whole right now is taking on way too much. We've taken on feeding kids. We've taken on becoming daycare for essential workers. And now educators are being asked to put their lives on the line. And I just want to know that staff have the right to say, no, I don't feel comfortable. I'm working from home, and that they don't have to worry about losing their job, for example.
Again, right now, we're following word for word the guidance and the executive order from the governor and from the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health. So there's a whole entire section in there that I believe the twenty-one-page document was in the school board packet. But I'll send the excerpt from the hundred-page document. There's a, I sent the small version to you all. There's like the bigger hundred-page document. I'd be happy to pull that. I'd be happy to pull that excerpt so you would have the exact language that, that we're obligated to follow. I would say just know that we are working with our staff. Every single communication that's gone out has talked about that safety is a top priority, not just for our students, but for our staff and families as well. That's why we've spent a lot of time collecting the information from staff, hearing from them, reading every single one of those comments that, um, that were written individually on the surveys and weighing all of that out. So thank you for expressing that concern for the staff as well, because the administration feels, feels the same.
Thank you.
Lori, and I think you had a question.
Yeah, I've got a process question and then just some, I guess, overall comments and questions. To be clear, what we are asking, what we're being asked to vote on or provide action on today is approval of the four-phase plan as well as starting in the Modified Hybrid phase of that plan? Or is it, we're, we're being asked to approve the plan and the administration has noted that we'll start in the Modified Hybrid?
Thank you. According to the guidance, every fourteen days, we will be, we will be get, no, every week, we will get new, um, health data for our local community and adjacent community or counties. And so, um, and I emailed this question to the Department of Education. So we will be looking at it week by week, that fourteen-day window. And so that's why currently the, we are seeking approval for the, for the full plan, so the four phases. And as of today, the date, based on that data, we would start in, in Phase Two, which means again, a very small group of, very small groups of kids who have very high needs in, in order to be successful in school. And the idea then would be, as Director Stunkel mentioned, if there were to be a, a large outbreak of, of COVID-nineteen, then the district would confer with the school board. But we would be able to more quickly go to a more restrictive phase. In order to move forward along these four phases, um, again, analyzing all of the data and, and the readiness plans, but also that would go through the school board as well. You know, and it would be at a quarter break. So not one week to the next. So everybody knows when the quarter break is coming up. I think first quarter either starts or ends November eleventh, maybe ends right around there. Uh, and so, and so that's, that would be the amount of time that we would be analyzing. And we would know, you know, a couple of weeks out, we would be able to schedule that with the school board.
So the plan would be, like you said, it could move from, for example, Hybrid or Modified Hybrid to heights from home at any point because of potential outbreaks or, or health and safety concerns. But we won't move from hybrid, like Modified Hybrid to Hybrid unless it's at a quarter transition point. And then there will be notification prior to families. And then there may be prep time for teachers and staff to be altering their educational plan.
That's exactly correct. Thank you.
And I know Molly, you have a question, but just because we're on topic here. And the board would be, and we would discuss any less restrictive decision here at the board table with you, you'd come and we would talk about.
So with the less restrictive, we are required to work with the county and the Department of Edu, uh, the Department of Education and Health have created these support teams. And so they're really, does, that support team is really designed to, um, let the schools focus on the learning and then they'll provide the guidance on the, the health piece of it. And so if we were to have an outbreak, we immediately consult with that support team and they're giving us that guidance. So it may be, um, it may be a quick turnaround.
No, I mean, if it, if we are more kids back in the buildings, we would have a voice.
If we're being less restrictive, it would go to the school board.
I understand you making a decision to not have school the next day if a certain amount of kids test positive.
Yes.
And I'm personally totally fine with that. But.
To move along the phase, uh, phases, less restrictive would be through the school board.
Okay, great. Did that answer your questions? They're kind of, all right, Molly, did you have a question or did it get answered in the mix there?
Asked and answered. Yes, thank you.
Procedurally, should we put this on the table as we continue this discuss, discussion? Or if for, because of, with the clarification of what we'll be doing, which is the, we're approving the four-phase plan.
Four-phase plan.
So I don't know if we wanna put it out there and then continue the conversations. I'm sure maybe Laura has questions or whoever too, but making a motion to move it forward and then have that discussion or procedurally is what I'm.
Procedural discussion. I was, yeah, I was curious before, I just kinda stamped it, what kind of voice we might have as a board. Laura, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any questions? I can't see you.
No, I, I don't. I, I read over the.
Thanks, John. All right, yes, thank you. Thanks, thanks for that former Chair Larkin, that chair, no, he's trying to be nice. I forgot to ask for a motion. All right, can we have a motion to carry this forward?
Don't move.
Thanks, John. Second?
Second.
Molly? All right, any further discussion on this topic with the questions would be great. Laura, sorry, I cut you off there. What were you talking about?
No, no, I, I, I understand the plan. It looks very sensible, very well thought out. And I appreciate the enormous amount of work that went into this. And thank you for keeping us so well-informed because, um, the materials that you kept us updated on were, were very helpful to eliminate, I guess, a, a lot of, um, extra questions and clarifications. So thank you.
I have a question for clarification.
Thanks, John.
My understanding then is this, we're approving, and we're talking about approving this four-phase plan. Your goal is to be Phase Two. And we're starting our quarter, actually the heights from home, correct? As you evaluate who students may be for needs and things like that? And that would be throughout this first quarter? Is that not right?
So thank you. For, um, based on our current data, we would, um, recommend Phase Two to start. And when we say all students would start in heights from home, that's because it takes a little time to deliver all the devices and have device and material pickup. It would take, so we wanted to be honest with, you know, and out there transparent communicating with the community that, um, on day one, if not everyone has their devices and/or, you know, et cetera. So it might take a little bit of time. And then Director Tuckrell talked about a little time to, um, get to know your new teacher, get to know your new school, learn how to be in this online environment. So within quarter one, we're looking at, um, based on our current data as of today, a Phase Two. So that would be, but it would take, you know, take a week or sort of, you know, to get launched.
And that was, I think, trying to say the same thing, only not as eloquently. We're not gonna be saying, okay, day two of school, we're gonna put kids in this building, this building. That's, that, your goal is to work to identify the students who needs, look and talk to staff and figure out what you have. So this isn't something that's gonna happen instantly, the, the modified piece of it.
We don't think so. We are collecting as much data as we possibly can, which might take a little bit of time, although we were pleased that over a thousand families, um, did respond to the survey. The original survey. So work, this is kind of new territory for us. So we're collecting that data. We, we hope that in the next several, five weeks, we will, we'll be able to have as much data and ready to go. But we just, we just know realistically with, um, material delivery and pickup and all of that and the hotspots and whatnot, that we, we just wanna be really prepared.
And again, for clarification, this would be for the first quarter. We wouldn't be halfway through first quarter going to Phase Three.
Correct.
You said it's gonna be evaluated at the end.
Each quarter we'll evaluate. And so as we're, as we're nearing the end of the quarter, then, um, the administration would come to the school board to give an update as to where we're at in terms of, um, community data, experiences, how it's been going. And then guidance on maintaining a phase. You, you know, we're just, uh, previous Superintendent Kelly said the, would always say the, the virus is controlling us. We don't control the virus. So we just have to watch, be as safe as we possibly can, um, do our best social distancing practices. And, um, like I, like I said earlier, balance that need to educate our students in the best way possible, keep safety for staff, students and families. And then also a really understanding that this has been challenging for our families as well. Families with young children, families with many children. So I guess, I, none of the phases, none of the four, one, two, three, four phases is a perfect choice for us. Um, and so all we can do is take a look at the data, listen to the stakeholders and make the best choice for right now. Thanks.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Holla.
So, um, so just to reiterate, to summarize what I'm understanding, we won't move to a less restrictive phase unless it's at quarters end and then we're planning it for the following quarter. And during any single quarter, if conditions change and COVID incidences increase or whatever, then we can immediately go to more restrictive. We don't have to wait for that.
That is absolutely correct. And then also built into the guidance from the Department of Education, we're allowed up to five days to make that transition. So, um, Director Tuckrell, this summer is working with teachers on that contingency plan. So if there were an outbreak, and I'm knocking on for Micah, if there were an outbreak, we would, we would go full heights from home, distance learning. And teachers would have, um, we would determine one to five days, what, what's needed to prepare for that. Because that's, that's a lot of prep time and a lot of prep work for them to do.
Thank you.
Lori?
I'm gonna apologize upfront, I actually got a list. So.
All right.
First though, I wanna make two comments. One is, I appreciate the time and effort that the administrative team is putting into this. It's evident by the number of directors that were involved in that presentation that this is really an all-hands-on-deck. And Director Bennett wasn't presenting, but obviously dealing with, um, staff concerns. She's right there in the mix. So I appreciate everybody's time and attention to that.
I also wanna identify our community members that way back when approved our, our technology funding. It allows us to be at a point where we can provide technology to every student. There are a lot of districts who are scrambling right now and finding those dollars and figuring out how they're gonna make that happen. And we have the technology that we need to be prepared for that. So I wanna give a shout out to the voters, um, who are involved in that. Because I think that allows our administration and our team to not necessarily, although I am sure Brian has been handling technology issues, but knowing that we've got a base and ready for that. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about some of the community members who reached out to me. You know, I've had a, a, a community member reach out to me who really wants students back in, in school, at least part, if not full-time. I've had a number of community members reach out to me that are, um, supporting a full-distance learning model. As a parent, um, you know, many of us board members, we wear many hats. I really wanted my kids in school this fall. I wanted nothing more than my ninth graders to experience what high school is like. They were super excited to buy school clothes that weren't uniforms. You know, and, 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 you know, have that experience and learn what high school is like and, and to be part of that. And I really wanted my kids to have that experience. And so it's disappointing. I, I think on the flip side of that, really looking at the risks that are involved, the, our students in our community, the high cases that we have, the high-risk factors that our students have, our staff safety, um, all play a part in, in what we, i- in the role that, that the administration has and that the board has to approve and what our plan is gonna be to educate our students during, um, an unprecedented, uh, pandemic. I think ultimately, my goal would be to see our district provide the absolute best education for our students in the safest and most equitable way possible. And that equity is very important to me. And I know it's important to, to other members as well and, and the safety piece. I also think that, um, and I appreciate Superintendent Segman talking to me yesterday as, as I was sharing some of my thoughts on the, on the plan and the process of really taking a look and saying, we had as a district, March, April, May, part of March, April, May and summer encore to experience distance learning and to gather data and to get feedback from staff and from parents and from students of what worked well and what didn't work well. What we haven't done as a district is done hybrid learning. And I appreciate the thought that's put into, can we get our most academically at-risk students in the classroom, those who would most benefit from in-person classes? Can we do that safely? Can we do that without increased risk, without contamination, without putting staff and students at risk? And can we do that and provide quality, safe and equitable education? So that we can learn from that on a small scale to be able to hopefully bring more kids back in the classroom if it's safe to do so and to do that well. Because what I don't wanna see happen is for our students to go back to class and to have it, just a, a hybrid situation or an in-person situation that, that doesn't work and that kids aren't learning or they're anxious or they're fearful and staff is afraid. And, and to have that be the focus instead of learning and hanging out with your friends. I, as I, much as I say, I want my, my ninth graders to go to school. I can't imagine them going to school and not being able to hang out or have lunch with their friends or hang out in the hallways or talk at lockers or go to homecoming and have dances and all of those things that make high school, high school. But they, they, you can go, but you can't do that. So I, I, I know I'm talking a lot, but I think there's a lot of things to consider and there's a lot of folks out there, um, who have opinions one way or another. And I don't think that we can provide something that is going to make everybody happy. But if we can provide, again, I'll repeat, a, 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 a safe and equitable education that is quality for our students, then that's our mission and our goal that we have to achieve. All right.
Thank you.
I'm sure Molly, go ahead.
If I can, thank you, Loriann. I'm not gonna reiterate everything that you said, but you know where my heart is as well. The equity piece is huge. And I really, in the work that I do day in and day out, um, appreciate you targeting those populations. I just have a couple of specific questions on that. So I think I have it right that you've identified the multilingual special ed, littlest learners and those with social emotional concerns. Is that?
In addition, part of the guidance states, um, students who, like twelfth graders who need support with graduation.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifying questions, because I anticipate that we as board members are gonna get some of these questions later. When you're talking about littlest learners, um, have you kinda given thought to, or are you starting to look at what that age group is? Can you speak to that? Or, and I understand this is difficult, so I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious. I know a lot of people are wondering that.
Sure, absolutely. Anecdotally, in some of the meetings and brainstorming meetings, um, you know, initially, maybe someone would talk about, um, students with special needs. And then another person would say, well, I'm worried about, I'm concerned about kindergarteners. And then another person would add, well, what about pre-K? So that's kind of how the conversations go. We're gonna have to mitigate staff capacity with, um, what the parents are opting for, if the parents are opting from, for heights from home, full-time or, you know, how many would, would even want to send their kids. So we're kinda still sorting through all, or collecting that data that we'll sort through. Initially, what, what I have, um, said to principals and directors is, let's start small and learn. And so really, each school will be, um, working to determine what that capacity is. So littlest learners is referring to pre-K and K in general and then learn from, go from there. Now, that's not to say all pre-K and K is coming on board. It's just those are the things that we need to look at. You know, a school might choose to have, uh, one-on-one in-person meeting with each of their kindergarten students throughout the month of September and the rest distance learning. I mean, it's really kind of flexible. Or maybe two students in whatever particular group they're in to do specific tutoring. So we're, we just have to see what our staff capacity ends up being as we get closer to the start of the school year and what parents are opting for. And then we'll be able to narrow it down.
And then I have another tough question. I apologize in advance. But the social emotional part, um, maybe a student wasn't experiencing that during the last school year and they identify as such in September. Are we looking to provide that support if we need to bring those individuals, knowing that that's gonna be a smaller number most likely, into the buildings on that occasional support in the, in the hybrid phase? Is it Phase Two Hybrid? I got it right. Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna see if Dr. Frye would want to talk about, uh, mental health supports.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, with our partnership with Lee Carlson, again, we, we were broadening that out this upcoming year. So right now, we have, you know, our social workers and our school psychologists who are kind of that foundational piece for the mental health support. the mental health support in the buildings. We have an in-between kind of a, a support there that we've added this year to, uh, for those students that perhaps need additional services for nine weeks, maybe 12 weeks. They would connect the Lee Carlson, um, into therapist and do kind of a small group, um, therapy session. And that could do, be via teletherapy, um, or it could be in person as well, whether it's at Lee Carlson's, um, site in Fridley or perhaps even coming in, obviously using the restrictions we have in place for social distancing and masking and what have you. Um, but that could, that could occur. And then again, we have the additional support above that. If, if the student still needs additional support, we would, um, connect them with a therapist and they would have additional individual therapy. The other piece of this is I, I also think of our anchor students. Um, again, they, they're getting teletherapy over the course of the summer. They're getting some of that support that they need. Um, but again, that in-person, that relational piece, that ability to look at the body language of the, of the person is vital to a lot of our students to learn and to grow as they build skills. So I think that's important as well to include that in our planning and to have that kind of in the forefront of our mind, um, to say, what does this look like? Again, I think our social workers and our, our school psychs have a really nice, um, ear to the ground, so to speak, to know who may be struggling. The other thing is, as distance learning continued in May, we found some students who we were not aware of that were struggling with this, um, that we needed to really push in and, and provide some of those services over the summer. So kind of having some, you know, again, we go back to the data and how do we figure that out? And again, having openness with the parents who are able to share that with us is important.
Thank you. One last thing, if I can. Thank you, Natty. I'm Tracy Iverson. Um, just want to take a minute to acknowledge our teachers and custodians. I know I've already acknowledged our admin team. No matter what our teachers do, it is going to be a huge task again, and I don't ever want to, um, go without thanking you all for doing that. Um, educating our students in this time is just so challenging. Um, and just a huge thank you to all of you that are doing that hard work. And also the custodians, I know they've been building staff, everything. Um, it's a hard task. So thank you all. Thank you, Natty.
Yeah. Um, other board members, comments or questions?
I actually have one more question.
All right.
Sorry.
Member Mueller.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the supports that would be provided, um, for orientation or, um, for, I'm specifically thinking of students who are entering a new school. So kindergarteners, sixth graders, and ninth graders who are very uniquely starting a, a new chapter of their lives and how will they be introduced to their teachers, to the school culture, to, um, to what's happening in the, in the new building that they'll be in?
Sure. I'm going to see if Director Takrol will talk about some of the work that, um, or in discussions you've been having with teachers and then, um, direct, Executive Director Niangwe, of course, working with the principals, if you want to add in after that.
Thank you. I think that's a very good question as we think about starting the school year. And our teachers are amazing. I've had wonderful meetings with them and every time I finish the meeting, I feel energized. I think their innovativeness and their ideas that they have are ones that we can never think alone. They are, they just bring so much to the table. So we'll continue to collaborate with them. And we're thinking about that first week of school and really making it as an introduction week. So how can we support through videos? How can we support through virtual sessions where they have an opportunity to meet their classmates and meet their principal, meet their other people in the building? And then we're also looking at open houses. What would that look like? And how can we support with a virtual open house or different orientation pieces for each grade level? So I think you're right. We're in the planning phases for that and we'll continue to collaborate with our teachers and our administration on planning those different orientations.
Thank you. All right, more questions?
I was, sorry, I.
Oh, yes, sorry.
The Executive Director Niangwe has something to add.
Thank you. In addition to that, uh, you know, uh, at the last board meeting, we shared about the work that the principals were doing during the month of July when they were off. Uh, they took time off from their vacation to come and meet with their team, uh, their leadership team to be able to plan this out. Uh, as they've come back to work yesterday, I had, uh, two meetings with principals today. And when I asked the question, so what do you think about virtual open houses? Both principals says, yes, we're going to do them. And one of them says, I've actually been planning this and I have different scenarios that I want to do. I want to be able to invite each classrooms on a small scale to meet their teachers, to teach them how to access technology and how to use it. But in addition to that, he also said, I want to make sure that we do that with the parents as well, because we know that parents play a big role into this. So these are two examples to show that our principals are consciously thinking about it. And one of the other principals said to me, you know, last year was the last year for our, some of our fifth graders. Every year they come back to school, they celebrate before they move on. We did not experience that. I am still thinking of a way to bring them back and celebrate that end of fifth year. So it is something that is on the forefront and the minds of, uh, our, uh, principals. And we're going to continue to work collaboratively with them to make sure that, uh, we create that opportunity for virtual open house or back to school so that we can experience the joy, uh, of being in school.
All right, thank you. More questions? All right, having, not hearing from anyone. I just want to add my thanks to you guys in the administration. Thanks for all your hard work. Um, like Lauren mentioned, I won't reiterate that. To teachers, um, I don't know if you know this, but I'm married to a teacher in a different district, so I hear his anecdotal, um, opinions on these things and what his concerns are. So I want to be compassionate to our staff as we do this and then our students, which we are, are parents. And so we're hearing from our students and, and it's, nothing's ideal, uh, this whole pandemic. Uh, it's, one of my friends got a mug that said, remember when things were precedented? And it was, you know, like now everything's unprecedented. Just remember when things were precedented? And I was like, it's, we don't use that word, but it's, it's a lot. And I have this long list of things I could ask questions about, which include special education evaluation, social service, identified needs. Like, and then I thought, wow, maybe just in a different meeting I'll ask you as to not make you all answer all these questions. And I'm sure there's hundreds of logistical questions that are, want to be answered by both staff and parents. Um, I think it's okay to ask, I assume, um, as we patiently wait for the plan to unfold from here. Is that, would that be a good way to look at that, Superintendent Stenvik? It's always okay to ask the questions, um, and, and as we wait for the answers to unfold? Or how would you like people who have questions to approach administration?
Yeah, absolutely. Questions are always welcome. And I would say just know that, um, we're in that data collection phase. You know, the, the more specific data and, um, we are, as we're, as we have information to communicate, we're blasting that out in, in all the different formats that Director Stunkel, uh, mentioned. So we're, we're communicating as timely as we possibly can.
All right. Thank you. Um, any, oh, go ahead. Yep.
I just have one other thing to clarify. My understanding is that this will be sent out to the community. Um, can you, can you clarify when? The.
We are hoping to send, uh, uh, information, um, this evening.
Thank you. Pending our decision, uh, here. I also wanted to thank parents. I forgot that I had a list of people I want to thank. Parents for all their hard work, um, and the sacrifices that people are making by not having childcare and the impact of the work. And I appreciate your mention of, of equity and how much this affects, um, of different people groups in different ways. And it's something we've all thought about. It's something I hear our administration talking about. Um, and that, it's just hard. It's a very hard reality right now. And so I, I appreciate all that's gone into this. And I want to thank you all for all your time. I can't thank you all in person, but I see you, um, out there. So thank you. Having said that, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Yes.
All right.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on, Minnesota School Board Association membership. Um, way less, uh, exciting or maybe anticipated is the outcome of this action item. Uh, I, I am the presenter and, uh, so I'll be presenting and asking the board to approve the Minnesota School Board Association membership for 2020, 2021. Could I have a motion to move that forward? I did remember the motion. So thanks, John. It's all moved. Lauren. Second.
Second.
Give it to Laura. She had the audio gap.
Thank you.
All right. You got in there, Laura. Uh, any discussion? You did have her be in our ears, but.
No, I think this is a membership that we take advantage of on a regular basis and it's definitely worth its cost.
It is.
Which is, what is it?
I just clicked the invoice here. Hold on, it's loading.
Ten six oh six.
It's loading slow. Yes, thank you, Don. Oh, there it is. Um, the, the total amount, balance due is 10,600 and it looks like $6 if my eyes are working right.
Yep.
Okay.
I think just so people understand, they provide, that, that membership provides all the, uh, required training for school board members. They offer multiple conferences and information along the way. We just recently utilized them, I think, for the superintendent evaluation process. So there's a lot of different things that we use the membership for.
And I would, all of those things that I would add for policy, for creation of policy and their input on sorting through as legislature changes statutes, how we need to change our policies, offering advice on that. That saves us lots of money in legal fees. So. Any, uh, other questions or comments, discussion?
Uh, there, there is one more thing too, is the, um, on non-COVID years, um, we also have a conference that we can all attend, um, that allows us to collaborate with other districts and find out, you know, maybe new innovative ways of doing things. So that is a, and that is free, um, as a member.
All right, thanks, Laura. All right, let's have a roll call vote.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Likewise, we will move on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. This is another organization we're involved with that helps provide with services. I'm just going to click the invoice here. It takes a little bit of time to load. Um, this invoice is for $8,666, which again, is a large amount of money. Um, but as somebody who sits on this board and, uh, Director, uh, not, I should have to pay like a jar every time I call you Director Stenvik, because you are Superintendent Stenvik.
Yeah.
Um, um, you mentioned you already have had interaction with AMSD on COVID-related return to school in the past. I would assume it was this past week then.
Yeah, and throughout the month of July, um, they've pulled people together for, um, just for that sharing process and to provide us constant updates from the legislature as well. Um, it's a lot of really great information that, um, typically would be a lot to sort through and they compile it down and summarize it for us. And so we're able to really utilize the, the guidance and any new legislation, um, immediately in the schools.
They do a lot too, to also educate the leg, the state legislature in educational needs. Cause oftentimes, there's so many things that they're concerned with, education's not on the top of their minds. They work hard to offer education to, um, the voting members of our legislator, legislature. Any other comments? All right, roll call vote.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Um, and last on our action items is the School Board Community Engagement Session. Um, did you, did, which is members Mueller, Lewis, and a Samurai. Did you have somebody designated to present?
I think Hala.
Yep. Hala, are you, um, presenting?
Is she experiencing technical difficulties?
Otherwise, I, I can jump in for the sake of time too. Um, this is a repeat of the informational item that Member Samurai had, um, communicated last meeting. Um, we need the board approval to, uh, approve our community engagement session, which is a virtual community engagement session scheduled for August 19th. Um, and, uh, Member Lewis and Member Samurai would be the school board members that would be, um, attending that virtual community engagement session.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
It's all moved.
Molly?
Second.
John, second? All right, discussion.
Just in reading the background of this, the session is, it's more of an open dialogue versus individual talking privately with a school board member. So a little different than we've done with our listening sessions in the past, but certainly a really good idea, so.
Yeah, basically it's, we, we tried the virtual listening session, uh, previously and it turned into more of a, of a dialogue community session. And so we figured that actually went well. And so we'd actually plan one that would go like that.
And just to be clear and kind of, um, continue on that conversation, it is not the forum to contact us if there is a specific individual, um, problem, because there will be multiple people on that. So just to respect the data privacy and confidentiality, that that is not the forum for it.
And it will be available. We did it via Zoom, so I'm assuming that will be the, um, means to have that. The school district is calling me, funny enough, because everyone's phone buzzing right now on their desk.
Hey, you got that, you got that information out really quickly, didn't you?
It's calling me. Um, sorry. I won't answer my phone, I swear. But everything started buzzing around me. Okay. Um, School Board Community Engagement. Yes, I think it's really wise that we kind of looked at what people wanted and it was, maybe is a, one of the few highlights is of, of this whole distance thing is that we're figuring out maybe how, how to engage our community a little bit better in ways that meet their needs. So thankful for that.
So please, mark your calendars.
Mark your calendars.
Six o'clock.
August 8.
So Hala and I aren't sitting on Zoom together.
August 19th. Do you have a time on that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
How would one join that? Would they have to, do you have to reach out or how do they get the link for the Zoom meeting?
It, it'll be emailed out similarly to last time by the district.
Could we request, uh, Superintendent Stenvik communicate with your communications department?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right, on to board topics. Does anyone have board topics?
I do have one.
Oh, all right. I'm surprised. I'm glad.
What's that?
I was like, what, what will people say? I'm glad.
Very good. Okay. Um, I've just heard a lot, um, of our constituents concerned about the fact that we cannot live stream these, um, meetings. And we all understand the enormity, enormous tasks that you guys have. Um, but we're really hoping that we can move quickly in the direction to meet our community needs and being able to view these. Um, we understand it might not be able to be interactive yet, but at least if we can try to figure out how we can do it live stream, um, similar to other, like municipal organizations are doing it. I just wanted to communicate that lots of community members are concerned about.
Yes, if I may, um, that was brought up at a previous school board meeting and, um, the board will be getting information on the process and where we're at so far. So I, Director Henneken, if you want to, is there time to say, well, two minutes worth of where we're at in the process or?
Uh, yeah.
Just looking into it and?
Yeah. Um, so, uh, tech is involved. Um, you know, obviously there's a lot of options out there to complete this. Um, we need to make sure that whatever option we choose still fits within the, the, the guidelines that we're, um, that we need to follow. Um, and it does take, um, you know, a level of money and technology to do it. And, and there's varying levels depending on the necessity of, you know, effort and what, what are we intending to do, whether it's just live streaming, a board meeting versus live streaming, other things that make it more valuable to, throughout the district. So, um, we were actually in conversations with two different companies on this, um, already. And, uh, we had a meeting this morning on it. So it's, it's actively in process. Um, and, uh, because we need to understand our total cost of ownership and how logistically we'll build and manage it based on how we, we do our meetings. Um, because it still needs to funnel through the system. And, uh, um, yes, there are other districts out there that are, are doing this already and they already had, um, the live stream capabilities for whatever reason within their district. And, um, but it's, uh, it's definitely not a majority, but, um, we are, we're getting much closer.
I appreciate that. Thank you for taking time to explain that. Thank you.
All right, other board topics? Sorry, Hala, if you have your hand raised, go ahead and talk. I was on the agenda. All right. All right. Well, thank you all for coming tonight and, uh, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:50 PM.